Good afternoon. Welcome to this special meeting of the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission. And could we have roll call, please?
Commissioners Garpetian?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Sharkey is absent. President Rothfogel?
Here.
The agenda for the February 22nd, 2012 meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on Thursday, February 16th, 2012. Item two, Commission staff comments.
Okay. Are you going to talk?
I just want to remind people about the Run the Verdugo's race that is coming up on May 6th. It goes 10K up the fire road in back of Brand, and this is the second year that we have done it. The Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation works on this particular project. It was a fabulous, fabulous time last year. And you can look at runtheverdugos.com to get more information and to sign up to participate. So I hope we'll see a lot of people running this year.
And I assume the downtown dash would be a good warm-up for everybody to take part in that in, I think it's March 17th, and then-
Yes, it would.
Go to the 10K.
That would be great.
Okay. I will be doing neither, but-
What?
I've got a physique to maintain.
Wanted to mention, I thought maybe you'd mentioned it, we went to the Glendale Education Foundation, and it was the-
Second annual-
Help me out here.
Second annual Dancing with Diamonds Awards Gala. We honored three graduates from the Glendale Unified School District and had a wonderful time, and thank you all who attended and supported us.
Great. It was a great function. It was a great evening, and Mr. Patrick was the president?
Yes.
President, did a great job.
Thank you.
And while that may be the second annual awards, we've been doing the gala itself-
That's true.
-for seven years now?
Yes, thank you for correcting me.
Well, no, it was second annual award.
Yes, but the-
But it's been an established program, and neither one of us won the, none of us won the diamond.
That's true.
But we were all there having a good time.
We were.
Next year, I'll be looking for a gold medal, but job well done, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other comments, Jess?
No. No comments.
Okay. And if there are none, I have none, if there are no other comments, what is next?
Item three is oral communications, and I don't have any cards.
It looks like, I also don't have any cards, this is sort of an agenda item. Okay, then what is next?
Item four, consent items for A approval of the minutes of the Commission's special meeting held on January 25th, 2012.
Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second, great.
Commissioners Garpetian?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sharkey is absent. President Rothfogel?
Yes.
Item 5A2, I'm sorry, I'm at the wrong place. Item five, business agenda, 5A action items, 5A1, resolution establishing registration fees for the Maple Stars Day Camp and recommending that the Glendale City Council incorporate the fees into the comprehensive citywide fee schedule.
Is there a report?
I'm here to present, President Rothfogel, members of the Commission. I'm here to establish registration fees at Maple Stars Day Camp at Maple Park Community Center. I'll go ahead and read the summary and the fiscal impact, and feel free to stop me at any time with any questions. The newly renovated Maple Park Community Center is scheduled to conduct its first day camp during the spring of 2012. The Maple Stars Day Camp will be held every summer, winter and spring, and will offer five options, a day-long camp, a half-day morning camp, a half-day afternoon camp, and before care and after care. The proposed fees are comparable to those of Pacific Community Center. The fees are based upon various factors such as camper-to-recreation leader ratio and potential field trips. The approval of the proposed fees would allow staff to begin preparing advertising materials promoting the day camps for spring 2012 season. The fiscal impact with the adoption of the proposed fees, the department is anticipating revenues approximately of $3,000. That's a small number. We're not sure how many kids we're going to get, so we're trying to keep the number as far as what we're expecting to get low, so we can exceed that and kind of grow from there. What I'll do is I'll move to exhibit one and go over the rates, and feel free to ask me any questions that you may have. So the day-long camp from nine to four will be $75 for the week, and this is a 10-week program. The half-day morning camp will be from nine to 12, that'll be $45 a week. The half-day afternoon camp from 12 to four will be $55 a week. Before care from seven to nine is $20 a week, and after care from four to six is $20 a week. Again, this is identical to Pacific Community Center. We're hoping to shadow their success. They've, you know, they're fortunate to have the elementary school and the library attached to them. We're hoping that we can feed off some of the kids there and some of our local kids at Maple Park. So it's as basic as that.
I have a question, sir.
Go ahead.
Quick question about the day camp, day-long camp program. Is it a week, so you have 10 different camps in 10 weeks?
It's 10 weeks long. It's not different camps. There'll be different themes every week, but the camp is the same. It's all in Maple Park, and it'll be lesson planned per hour. So the parents will have an option of doing a half-day, a full day, they can bring them at seven, they can leave them till six, so we try to give them every option we can think of.
And the fee of $75 is for five days for one week?
Right, it's for one week, $75 for the week, which is a great price for a week long.
And then, I think part of your question also was, can they, do they have to sign up for all 10 weeks?
No.
They can sign up for one week?
Right, they sign up per week.
But not per day?
No, not per day, per week. So that way we know our numbers, which we hopefully will get registration midweek of the week in front of us. So if it's week one and you want to sign up for week two, hopefully we'll have that registration by Wednesday or Thursday of that week before.
And if somebody wants to sign up for however many weeks, they can do that all at once also?
I'm not sure about that. I think that they can do that potentially, but I'd have to find out. I think that they have to sign up per week, from my understanding.
And the age group?
Five to 12 years old.
Five to 12 years, okay.
And how does this fit in with the, with going to school? I can see in summer it's really great, but in the winter and the spring?
Well, there's a spring break with the Glendale Unified from April 9th through 13th, so we're hoping to pick up some of the kids for our camps for that.
Okay.
And the same thing with the winter recess, we're hoping to do two weeks of camps during the breaks.
Okay, so during the winter and the spring, it's not a 10-week session?
No, the 10-week session is for the summer.
Summer.
Yeah, the spring is one week, the winter is two, and then the summer is 10.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You might have already said this, or it might be in the report, what are the ages that we're talking about?
Five to 12.
Five to 12.
Yeah, we're doing the school-age kids, yeah. And they have to be, they have to already have been in kindergarten. So we're not, you know, we're not doing any nap times or things like that. It's a full-day program. Yeah, so we want to start lesson planning and programming, and that's why we're here a little bit early, to get ready for the spring, and hopefully the spring will propel us to a good summer.
Okay.
It's a great program.
Thank you. We're hoping it's, it does really well.
If there are no other questions, can I, can I have a motion to accept resolution number 12-01?
Before you make the motion, I have one more question, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
How are you planning on promoting this? This is a great program, but how do you want to go to the community and make sure they know about those programs so they can enroll more, more, more kids versus less?
Obviously, we use our leisure guide to the best of our abilities. We have, we get into the Glendale Unified School District's Thursday folders. Obviously, we promote in all of our facilities, whether it's ours, or Pacific, or SPAR, wherever we can. We unite as a group to promote each other's programs, so we get into as many schools, talk to as many teachers, and we all have our contacts, so we go out of our way to use them. So we advertise everywhere the city allows us to, but especially in the schools. That's our main objective, to get into those Thursday folders. That's where we get most of our sign-ups.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now then?
Okay, I move resolution number 12-01.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Commissioners Garpetian?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sharkey is absent. President Rothfogel?
Yes.
Item 5A2, motion to review and provide feedback regarding programs, ideas, policies that staff has already begun to implement or would like to explore to help increase revenue, decrease expenses, or recover costs.
Hey.
Good afternoon, Chair Rothfogel, members of the Commission. Thank you. My name is Teresa Alexanya, I'm administrative analyst for the Community Services and Parks Department. And before you today is a report that we had put together regarding programs, policies, just ideas that staff had collectively come up with to try to help us either increase revenues, decrease costs, or recover costs. I believe at the May 2011 Commission meeting, Commissioner Khan had also asked for staff to look into this because of the budget situation. So what we did is, we put together a couple of items that we have already started to implement, and also a list of some ideas and policies and programs that we would like to potentially be able to implement, and staff will be looking further into those. The ones that we have already implemented are charging, or starting to charge, city departments, community organizations that use city facilities. Before, we were able to allow organizations or other city departments to use the facilities free of charge, and we were able to provide that as an in-kind service or sponsorship. But now we're trying to at least recover the staff costs and charge the agency or department that will be using our parks' facilities, and try to at least recoup the out-of-pocket costs. So it's anything that we would have to incur to be able to allow them to use that space or provide that service, we would charge them for. For example, you know, if GUSD is using the Civic for an event or one of our community rooms, they'll have to at least pay for the rental and any staff that would have to come in to set up for the event. So another program that we have implemented and Commission has approved the fees for is our Verdugo Mountains 10K Trail Run and Hike Event. That was a program that was previously presented to Commission, and the fees were approved. And so that's a program that will help us generate some, hopefully help us generate some revenue so that not only we could continue to have that event for the city, but maybe be able to eventually raise enough revenue to offer other programs, supplement other programs. The other thing is social media. We've started a department newsletter, Twitter, Facebook, website to market fee-based services. So we've developed a media team who has looked into reaching out to the community and bringing in additional clients and reaching out to the community to make sure that we, you know, we are maxed out if possible on the classes we offer or the programs that we offer. So we've developed that as well. Some of the ideas that we would like to explore, and we'll return to Commission with results of our studies, our feasibility studies, and, you know, including startup costs, staff costs, challenges, available resources, et cetera, we'll come back with that study. But some of the ideas that staff has come up with are a caretaker at Duke Magian Wilderness Park. We would like to hire a caretaker to live at Duke Magian Park to help with maintenance and security at the park, and then on weekends provide staff support for rental at other parks. This, not only will it help us increase revenues with the second item that's on the list, but it will also help us decrease costs. You know, we would need less paid staff to be able to do reservations at other facilities, because right now some of our caretakers also take on that duty of attending other facilities or other events, or opening up facilities for events that we have. So hopefully with one additional caretaker, we'll be able to decrease our staff costs of having to hire additional hourly staff. Also, rental of picnic facilities at Duke Magian Wilderness Park. Staff is looking into setting up a fee schedule for rental of Duke Magian picnic shelters and amphitheater for special events. As we know, that's a beautiful facility and location for weddings. We get a lot of requests for weddings up there and events, and so staff is going to be evaluating that to be able to offer that to the community who would be interested. This will help us increase our revenues, and of course, the caretaker would probably be the best person to try to be the staff at some of those events, and that's how that would help us.
I have a question before you move on from that. Is there, in terms of a caretaker's unit, is there anything like that up at Duke Magian now, or would you build something for someone to live in?
I know we have the house up there, which used to be the naturals' house, but I don't believe that's going to be the one that will be used. So I think we're still looking into what would be the best option for having a caretaker there, whether it would be adding another facility or renting a trailer. But again, those are all part of the conversations that we are having and evaluating whether this is feasible.
President Rothfogel, Commissioners, in all likelihood, it would be the existing house that's at Duke Magian or a portion of the house. The other caretaker option or hybrid that we are looking at is more of a camp host, where we hire an individual, well, we don't hire, but we allow an individual that has his or her own trailer, and they bring their trailer onto the park, and then they live in their trailer on the park for a period of time, and so we're exploring that option as well.
Do we pay the caretakers now a stipend?
No.
So all they're getting is basically a place to live?
Free room and board.
Well, free room, no board.
I'm sorry, free room.
The reason I mention it, though, is if we are needing to build something, obviously that cost has to be factored in as well, but it sounds like we're not needing to do that.
Right, and those would all come back, you know, in our evaluation, we would all look into all those possibilities and come back with the cost that would be.
Sorry, thank you.
Oh, no, it's okay. Another idea is batting cages at the sports complex. I believe that was part of the original part of the sports complex master plan was to have batting cages up there, and so we're revisiting that and looking to see if that could be one of our priorities for CIP projects, to be able to put batting cages up there in order to increase the revenues by renting out the facility to users. Another idea is mobile recreation program expansion to include dance, stage, dance floor, and generators. We have all of those, and so we would look into packaging those and being able to rent it out, which would potentially increase revenue for rentals. Advertising signage, sell of space on ball fields. I know we had come to you with a banner policy, and I believe you received an update on that. If not, it would be in this Commission meeting, the status of that, but we're looking to hire a marketing firm to be able to do that for us, so on a commission basis, to basically help us sell ad space on our ball fields. So we're looking into that. Outdoor, indoor electronic messaging at community centers, Civic Auditorium Sports Complex. Again, it's sell of ad space on electronic messaging boards, like the marquees or in front of the Civic Auditorium, being able to sell ad space, developing a policy for that. Another idea is to develop a specific wedding site at the Civic for outdoor wedding locations and pictures, and that basically means identifying an area outside of the Civic to develop into a portable wedding location to hold outdoor weddings, so we're looking into the feasibility of doing that. Bingo at Civic on weeknights, allowing rental of Civic Auditorium, which would again increase the revenues for rental. Allowing karate, Jiu-Jitsu tournaments at the Civic, again, allowing rental of the Civic for these kinds of events and increasing the revenue for rental of the Civic. And the potential of having an indoor basketball court at the Civic Auditorium, so converting the Civic Auditorium to an indoor basketball court and running it out during the weekdays where it's not getting as much use for basketball use. So these are all ideas that staff is considering and looking into and will return to Commission. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or take feedback from Commission on any of the ideas or additional potential ideas that you can think of that we haven't already. Thank you.
I have a question or two. Sure. On the things that you've already started implementing, I guess, is the charging city departments, Glendale Unified School District and community organizations. Are all the city departments doing this now where they're moving into charging each other for use of things like facilities and that kind of thing? I mean, take GWP out of it, but the other departments?
President Rothfogel, Commissioners, the city has, in terms of charges by the departments for city services, the city has a general cost allocation plan where it assesses the cost for internal services and the chargeouts to the various departments, and then the city funds those charges. But for non-city general revenue funds, for example, redevelopment funds would pay for those charges, charged to the redevelopment or other special funds. And we also have a cost allocation plan for ISD charges, which are information, information services department charges. In terms of departments charging each other for other fees, our department is probably more the exception where whenever, where because we rent facilities and we rent equipment, the practice had been that for fellow city departments and the school district, we would not charge for any equipment or any rental of any of the facilities, nor for the staffing that needs to be called in for setup and takedown and delivery of equipment. But we need, but because of reductions to the Community Services and Parks Department budget, we need to now begin charging for what I refer to as out-of-pocket expenses, which is the staff cost for needing to call in staff, which we would otherwise, which would otherwise not be expenses that we would be incurring. So we're starting to charge for that. And so this is kind of a transition year, but that's what this is. We're starting to charge for our out-of-pocket expenses.
And what do we do if a city department wants to use the Civic for something, and then we would have a opportunity to rent it out? Do we, do we keep the city department as tentative until a certain period of time? Or if they're going to use the facility, is it their facility, and if something comes in to be rented, we just don't rent it?
President Rothfogel, Commissioners, Ross Ferris, Community Services, Parks, and the Civic Auditorium. Presently, it's on a first-come, first-served. In other words, if a city department is going to use the upper auditorium, they book that date. That, once it's booked, that's their date, because they're making plans, they're, let's say they're going to have a test, they're inviting the applicants to come in, et cetera. If we have a customer that calls us after that is confirmed with the city department, we simply tell the customer that it's already booked and suggest another date.
Thank you.
I have Sir Ross, or either order doesn't matter. What is the cost of renting the Civic Auditorium during the weeknights? Let's say there is a basketball league, they want to, we converted the Civic into a basketball court, and they want to lease it for two months or three months, two or three nights a week. What is the cost per night to lease?
We're just figuring that out as part of this. It's about $200 an evening.
$200 an evening, okay. And as far as the wedding receptions, I think it's a great idea, we'll just improve that area as well, and we have to do some more landscaping to make it more appealing. But how about indoor wedding receptions? I mean, we have, Civic has the largest banquet hall or reception hall in the city, and most of the functions go to smaller halls or even to outside, to the other cities, because maybe we don't go after them or we don't attract them. Is there a plan to maybe look into renovating Civic to make it a little bit more appealing inside for wedding receptions? Because what is the capacity, 600 to 700 people? What is the number?
Yes, upstairs in the upper auditorium, it's 700, and in the lower auditorium, it's 500.
Okay, so we have two great halls that we can generate tremendous revenues from, by renting out the banquet halls or the reception halls. Is there a plan to look into renovation or improving the Civic Auditorium?
We have discussed this actually very recently. The answer is yes, but you have to understand a couple things. The Civic Auditorium was built in 1937 as a municipal auditorium to serve the community in a variety of aspects, and it still does. It can be used as a shelter, it can be used as a testing site, it can be rented out for revenue as a wedding area, it can be used for dinner dances. So the building has to be flexible enough to do that. On the same vein, though, they do have portable decorations and things now that we could use and put them up and take them down to make it more attractive. However, we have found that individuals who rent the Civic for, let's say, a dinner dance, they're very creative. They decorate the facility themselves. We have rules as to what they can and cannot do, but for the most part, they make it very attractive. But if we're going to advertise it, yes, we can make it more attractive, we just have to purchase the equipment, and it isn't much to do that, and then make sure that we can change it back to a more flexible facility quickly.
I think one of the challenges is with some of the things mentioned in this report, you can do something to make the room look more exciting, like we did for the city's 100th anniversary.
Yes.
But if we then also add basketball courts and basketball hoops, even if they can be raised up, it will, you know, it's going to take away a little bit from the-
The basketball hoops and backboard, they're portable, they're on wheels, and we can get them out of sight. And what we would do is, we would tape the floor, and then we can take the tape up so you wouldn't see the markings on the floor. And the scoreboards would also be portable. It would be tabletop, so we can remove those. So we are, that is one option that we are actively pursuing. I'm working with both the legal department and the insurance department right now to make sure that all of our bases are covered before we go further.
Is there a restriction on the consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Civic?
We can serve alcoholic beverages. In other words, people who rent the facility can serve alcoholic beverages. When we have a permit that has an event with alcohol, we provide one security guard for every 75 people. We provide one designated person to watch the bars, to make sure that there's no underage drinking, and to make sure that if people have consumed too much alcohol, we do stop those individuals from consuming any more liquor, yes.
But there's not a, like, for instance, you can't drink in a city park, or you can't drink at some of the other city facilities. At the Civic, you can.
Yes, the Civic- Yes, the Civic is Zone SR2. That's the zone for the Civic, and alcohol is permitted within that zone.
Okay. And one more question. What is the cost of renting the Civic Auditorium for weeknights, like Saturday night or Friday night, or maybe a Sunday?
Well, the average cost of a typical event there is just around $4,000. And that would be an event of, let's say, 300 people.
Right. That includes the security guards and...
Right.
Insurance and everything else.
Right.
Okay. I think we need to look into it a little bit harder because with the technology today and all the other abilities that we have, look at Staples Center, they play basketball one night, hockey the other night, and they have a concert at the end of the week. So I'm sure we can find ways to make it more attractive, to, you know, rent it out more and generate more revenues for the city.
I agree. We're working very hard toward that goal.
Thank you for that.
I like all these ideas, and I think that with the Civic in particular, that's a large building, it's a centrally located building, it could be used for a lot of different things, and so I think the word you're using, flexibility, is a great one, and whatever we can figure out that keeps that space flexible, but allows, also allows people with different interests to come in and make use of that building. It shouldn't just be sitting there, it's too wonderful for that. So let's figure out some other things to do with it.
Very good.
Is bingo prohibited in the city currently?
I'm working with legal to make sure that we're okay with that. I don't know. I really don't know that. We're exploring that. If it is illegal, obviously, we won't do it.
Or we'll change the, have the city council change the ordinance.
We can approach that, maybe.
Okay, any other questions? Any more questions?
No, thank you.
No? Okay, and so there is a motion to, do we need, is there a motion for this? Do we need to note and file? What do we need to do?
It's basically a motion providing feedback. So if you have feedback for staff regarding what has been presented, that would be the motion.
So you want me to make a stab at this?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure.
I move that the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission approve the ideas that the staff has come forward with to, regarding the programs, ideas and policies that they've begun to implement or would like to explore and move forward with those, we are in favor of all of them.
I'll second that.
Yeah, that works. Sure.
It was a rather disjointed motion, but you can clean it up.
I understand. Okay, I'll call, role, Commissioners, Garpetian?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sharkey's absent, President Rothfogel.
Yes, and keep on bringing back great ideas. What is next, please?
Item 5B reports, information only, 5B1, banner policy update.
Good afternoon, President Rothfogel and members of the commission. I'm Gabrielle Golia, and I am here, I'm actually bringing back our banner policy to provide you with a bit of information about it. On August 15th, this past fall, you directed us to expand upon the policy that was originally approved on October 18th of 2010. The policy allows us to rent banner space currently at the Glendale Sports Complex on the field fences, as well as the Verdugo Skate Park. Shortly after we presented that to you and you directed us to expand upon it, a marketing company approached some of the staff and expressed interest in selling that space for us and basically giving us a percentage of the profits. We felt that that was a great idea because at this point in time, we don't have any staff money to be able to solicit these sales, and so that would provide us with the opportunity to actually, hopefully, gain more revenue than we would currently. Legal directed us to get a request for proposal and an RFP and go out to bid and allow companies to write proposals in, instead of just going with the company, obviously, that came to us, to be fair. And so at this point in time, an RFP draft is up in the legal department, and they are reviewing it, and we are waiting, awaiting their review and approval on it, and then hopefully, we will go out to send it out for proposals to come back to us. We, at that point in time, once we choose, and if we choose a contractor for this service, we will bring that amended, expanded policy back to you and include that marketing company in it. We felt that at this point in time, expanding upon it while we're also working on an RFP seemed slightly redundant, and because we don't have any demand for banner space coming to us, there didn't seem to be a great need to expand upon it right this moment. So we just wanted to update you on that process and let you know that as soon as we identify a marketing company, either the one that came to us originally or another one based on the proposals that come back, we will bring to you a new policy with all of the fields included in that banner policy and the fees that that contractor has set or proposes to set.
When do you think you'd be coming back to us?
Hopefully, it will be in, I would guess, early summer is my guess on the earliest that it could come back. It will depend a bit upon how long it takes our legal department to approve the RFP, and then I believe the standard duration is a 30-day duration on getting the proposals back, once we open it up to public meetings and questions and a review of the proposals.
And if someone wants to advertise from next week, do they contact you?
Yes, currently, we...
Please provide your information so the public will know as well.
Yes, you can contact the Glendale Sports Complex. I'm Gabrielle Golia at 818-548-3797, and we can work with you on banner space. Currently, you can advertise at the Glendale Sports Complex and at the Verdugo Skate Park, and if you're interested in being included when we send out the RFP, we will include you in that list as well.
And the cost is $100 a month at this time?
At this point in time, it is $100 per month for...
Local business.
A local business in Glendale. It's $200 per month for a non-local business. Nonprofit advertising, for instance, Little League wants to advertise its own organization and leave the banner up for a month, it's $50. If one of our approved community youth groups, such as Little League, gets a sponsor and wants to advertise that sponsorship banner on the field and leave it up for a whole month, then we ask for 25% of whatever the funds that they raise are for that. And then we still allow daily placement of banners by all of the local youth groups during their permitted time. They can place banners and take them back down at no fee. So if a local youth group like Little League gets a sponsor of Shakey's Pizza, and they want to put that banner up during their games but take it down, we wouldn't charge them anything for that.
With the new market, let's say we went with a marketing company, will part of their RFP be to give us proposed fees, or are we going to stick with what we've already passed?
At this point in time, we've asked them to propose fees because they, as a professional company, they may have a better handle on what kind of sales they can procure for the banner space. However, we did include in the RFP that the local youth groups, like the Little League, would still be able to place their banners for the day for free and take them down because we don't want to impact those groups and their fundraising and sponsorship abilities.
Any other questions? Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
And what is next?
Item 5B2, Glendale Sports Complex Annual Report.
All right, then.
I'm still here, and I'm here to now present you with our annual report on the Glendale Sports Complex. The sports complex opened in 1999, and we added synthetic artificial turf on the soccer fields in 2004. The complex is open from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. We have three softball fields, one has the base pegs to also become a baseball field, and we have the two artificial turf soccer fields. We also have a snack bar and a snack area that people can sit at, and we have a, one of the local youth groups does act as our concessionaire in that snack bar, in order to help them raise some money and also provide a bit of revenue for the complex. In addition to those, we also are in the development process or design process of the Mountain Dew Trail and the Catalina Verdugo Trail. The Mountain Dew Trail, currently, there is a gravel access road around the outside of the sports complex, and the proposal is that we will turn that into an ADA-accessible trail that everybody can enjoy, runners and people in wheelchairs, people with any kind of special needs, and everybody else. And then in addition to that, coming off of the Mountain Dew Trail, there's a proposed Catalina Verdugo Trail, which would extend up into the hillsides and meander up, it would connect with the Ridgeway Mountain Fire Road at the top, so it would provide access down to Emerald Isle on the backside, and it would kind of come back around to the north end of the sports complex. In the 2010-11 fiscal year, we, our primary source of income was from rentals of the soccer fields. Rentals of the facility in general provided $411,000. That is a net profit, I'm sorry, that is a gross profit, and the soccer fields were the primary rentals. At 359 days of the year, we had rentals on the soccer fields. So that is almost every day except for the major holidays. Wow. Yes. Our prime time is from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. every single day and all day on the weekends, and save for those holidays, we were rented at every possible hour. We do have a waiting list currently for the soccer fields. The next big program that we operate there is our softball league. We have men's leagues on Tuesday through Friday nights and co-ed on Sundays and Mondays. We do offer a women's league, but due to low participation, most of the women's teams that are interested add a couple of men and become a co-ed team. So we haven't operated an actual women's-only league in a couple of years now. We had 509 total teams last year, and the net revenue was $152,000 for that program. The soccer league, we have 40 spots available each year, and we had 40 teams out of 40 spots, so we were completely full with soccer. The previous year, we looked into increasing the number of teams through a number of methods, shortening the games, extending the seasons a bit, adding a little bit of time at the beginning to try and get another game in that every evening. But we sent out a survey to all of our players and teams, previous and current, and the general consensus was that they didn't want to change the program. They would rather have competition to get into it but leave it as it was than increase the numbers.
What is the competition to get into it? Is it a lottery, or how do you do that?
It is a lottery, yes. If we have more than 20 teams per season, we do offer two seasons, if we have more than 20 teams, then we'll do a lottery for it. And we have everybody come together at a manager's meeting. They have to bring their registration fee at that time so that they are ready to register, and it's equal, and we'll do a lottery for the spots. It's not a full lottery. Basically, seven of the teams from the previous year are invited back, and three teams, we have two nights, that's why it's seven and three, three teams that had the most yellow and red cards the previous season, they go into the lottery. We try, we do that to try and encourage good participation and sportsmanship. We are pulling money from the Prop A grant still at this point in time. There is a finite amount available, and we can take as much or as little as we want each year in order to support the operations at the sports complex. We used to pull $250,000 annually to support the operations. The grant was there to help us establish the complex to become self-sustaining. This last year, we did take $175,000 for the grant, so we have been reducing it in order to attain that self-sustainability. Our total net revenue in 2010-11 was actually $191,000. So if we hadn't pulled from the grant, we still would have been in the black. So that was an accomplishment for us last year. All of our part-time staff and most of our full-time staff are paid for out of this enterprise fund. There's a portion of two full-time staff that are paid for out of the general fund, I'm sorry, out of this enterprise fund. There's a portion of two staff that are paid for out of the general fund, and those two staff are supervising other programs as well, so they don't, their sole responsibility isn't in the Glendale Sports Complex. And I can answer any other questions that you might have about the program and the operation. Yes.
I have a question. You said our net revenue was $191,000.
Yes.
What do we do with that?
That goes into the enterprise fund, and I believe Jess can probably answer that a little better than I can.
President Rothfogel, commissioners, basically, it goes into a reserve, an operating reserve. So we are able to use it to offset costs in other enterprise funds where we actually incur losses. For example, the Civic Auditorium operates at a net loss of between $250,000 to $300,000 a year, and that's the reason why we are so focused on Civic Auditorium when we talk about revenue-generating ideas and becoming more self-sufficient. So, for example, part of this would be used to offset those losses.
Okay.
And also to build up the reserve so that when we discontinue drawing from the Prop A funds where we really have to be self-supporting, so we're also building up for that purpose as well. And how many more years do we have to be able to draw from the Prop A funds, Gabrielle, approximately?
I believe we have three more years.
Okay, so after three years, that $175,000 subsidy goes away.
Okay, so the prop, I can't speak. Proprietary grant of $175,000, we have for three more years. So is it a use-it-or-lose-it type situation?
I believe it is, and I believe that we've extended it out those three extra years by pulling less every year. That's my understanding of the grant.
Okay. Because I was trying to figure out if we have a net positive and we're pulling off this grant, you know, the accounting, if it made sense, and it sounds like...
We want to take full advantage of the funding that's being offered to us.
Okay, thank you. I noticed that in the, on the revenue side, all the revenues are up, with the exception of miscellaneous, but that's miscellaneous, and tournaments.
Yes.
Why is the tournament revenue down?
There's two reasons. One is that the Club Maple Tournament was not held this year. Traditionally, that was a tournament that was, it was a fund, partially a fundraiser, but it also acted as some source of revenue for the sports complex. And in this fiscal year, due to some budget cuts, that tournament went away. In addition, our winter tournament got rained out a number of times, not just once. We seem to have a curse at the sports complex that it has only rained on the weekends that we've tried to have that winter tournament. So it's currently scheduled again for the end of March, we just keep rescheduling it, but that will fall into a different reporting period, so it is not included in these figures.
Any other questions?
Yes, this pie chart, it shows rental income of $59,149. What is that for?
That is the cell phone towers. There are cell phone towers that are located on the property above the sports complex, and so that's a set income from a contract with the cell phone companies.
So it's not from public renting a facility over there, it's just the cell phone towers? Okay.
Right, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Do you guys ever use, in terms of the fields, I know that you have a breakdown of the soccer fields and the baseball field and whatever, do you use baseball fields for soccer? You use everything for everything?
We do. We don't typically use the soccer fields for baseball because sometimes the teams will go out there, but we don't allow any metal cleats on our artificial turf, so they can do some basic practicing. But we do allow the AYSO in particular to paint soccer fields on the outfield of the softball fields, and they do play soccer, although it is very rough on our grass, and the sports complex is a prime facility, and we try to maintain it. We are charging quite a bit of revenue or quite a bit of rental fees for it, so we try to maintain it and keep the grass beautiful, but it's very tough when we put soccer on it. So it's a balance of making sure we're serving the needs of the youth in the community, but also keeping our facility nice for rentals.
Is Gary doing a good job taking care of the facility?
I would love to say yes, but Gary actually doesn't supervise the staff at the sports The sports complex maintenance staff are actually included in our staffing structure, and so we pay for them and we supervise them up at the sports complex specifically. So we're a little, a little unit, a team. We work... We work together, but I'm sure Gary would do a great job.
I'm sure he would too.
I have one last question, this came to mind. In terms of the, the revenue generated, are we setting aside money to replace the fields or replace the facilities, or is that from a different pot or a different fund?
President Raufelgold, commissioners, for example, to replace one of the artificial turf fields, and I don't know how many years we have left on the economic lifespan of the current fields, but it would probably cost anywhere between...
Two million.
I'm sorry, Emil?
Roughly about $250,000 a field.
$250,000 per field. So we would probably, the plan would, would be to budget that capital expense is part of our capital improvement budget versus the operating budget. But due to the condition of our capital improvement budget, which is, which was drastically cut last year, and I don't know when we'll be able to build it back up, the, the reserves that I mentioned earlier, it's, it's possible that we might end up using the reserve fund for that capital expense instead, or other reserve funds for that type of a capital expense. And it's, it's, it's a constant balancing act between the, the replacement cost of the fields and, and when, and which fields do you prioritize to keep the best, at the highest level of maintenance on.
Sure.
You know, for example, we have the three baseball fields. For the most part, we have sacrificed one for the dual-use to meet the demand for soccer, but also have it available for baseball. Then concentrate the other two baseball diamonds to be able to market the, the high level of maintenance and condition of those baseball fields for the baseball leagues. And so it would be the same thing with trying to balance when we replace fields and which ones, you know, soccer versus baseball, et cetera.
Because it would make sense to me to do that, to start looking at putting some of that revenue aside in terms of, at some point, those fields are going to need to be replaced.
And along those lines, I would be remiss if I did not mention, Mr. Tatavosian is working on a long-term strategic plan to begin to set aside funds or capitalizing funds so that when our priority needs do, do hit us, there will be some footing there to be able to address them.
Thank you.
Is replace, is replacing the field the type of thing that would also possibly fall under a CDBG grant?
If, if the field is located in southern Glendale, it is clearly eligible for CDBG. The artificial turf field that we are installing at Pacific Park, for example, is CDBG-funded, and that's about a million-dollar project because it's, it's a brand-new field. So there's all the, the startup costs associated with, with a new artificial turf installation versus replacing artificial turf where the infrastructure is already, already laid out and it's already graded. So, most definitely, we can use CDBG funds for artificial turfs in southern Glendale parks.
But not at the sports complex?
We wouldn't be able to do it at the sports complex, no. Okay.
Okay, so, any other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
And what is next?
Item 5B3, Catalina Verdugo Adobe, Restrooms, Main Pedestrian Pathway and Lighting Improvements.
Good afternoon, President, Commissioners, Lila Batar, Project Managers with the Park Our site, we're, we're looking at doing some improvement at the Catalina Verdugo Adobe site. The site is located at the north section of Glendale in the Verdugo Woodlands West neighborhood, and it is one of our parks that are located on the map. The site has Adobe structure, which is the oldest structure in Glendale. Some people think Casa Adobe is the oldest structure, but actually Catalina Verdugo is older than Casa Adobe. It was, it was built around 1816. This is a picture of the Adobe in 1916. The site also includes another historic component, which is the location for the Oak of Peace, and the significance of the Oak of Peace, there is believed that under the oak, the terms for a Mexican surrender of California territory was discussed on January 11, 1847. Right now, the oak is, is of course died, and there is a plaque signifying the location. This is the Adobe Museum, which is docent by the Days of the Verdugo's Heritage Association, and it is open by appointment only. This smells disgusting. Okay. On the site, we also have a garage structure, which was, it's a mid-century garage, was built in 1946. We have a, a nice open patio area. We have an existing trellis, which, structure which was built, I believe, in the 70s, and a little fountain. We also have a nice group picnic area and somewhat of a roadway, which is the main pedestrian pathway on the site. The roadway was an actual public road that was dedicated in 1946 by the Baches. Vacated, I'm sorry, I mean. The site has lacked public restroom facilities for a long time. There is a small restroom in the Adobe Museum that has been non-operational for a while, and Gary had brought in some portable, affordable potty on the site for a while as well. So that, that has been a problem with the lack of restroom facilities. We, I, I forgot to mention that we also use the site for rental. We have rental for birthdays, we rental for wedding ceremonies and so on, for photo opportunities and so on. So we evaluated the site to look where to put a restroom facility, and when we looked at it, we, we found that the garage could be a very appropriate structure for renovation into a public restroom. It seems that the garage is in a good, the structure is in good condition, so we won't need to tear down the roof. We could, we could just renovate the building itself. We will be able to put two unisex bathrooms and a prep room where we could use in conjunction of the rental. If food needs to be served, it could be served, you know, placed and prepared, not prepared, but served from that, that prep room. And we could have also a sizable gardener's room. We intend to, to design the renovation in a manner that is compatible to the Adobe structure, so it won't be your typical restroom, it'll be a little different. And at this time, we're looking at opening the restroom in conjunction with rental activities and the museum tours. So it won't be open to the public if there is no, no rental activity happening or a This is the elevation of the restroom. We had presented the design to the Historic Commission, and they had some minor comments. One of the comments, we had some privacy screens that they were concerned about security, so we removed those. We're adding some vegetation, some vines on the wall to soften the wall, but the design in general reflects the spirit of the Adobe, the design. Also, we, we found that the existing trellis has no value to the site. It, it actually obstructed the view of the Adobe, and it crowds the patio area. So we're looking at removing the existing trellis, removing also the tile on the flooring because it has lifted, and it's a trip-hazard condition, and we're looking at creating an open area in, in the patio. This is where the trellis will be removed, and this whole area will be expanded and open, so you'll have the general patio area for rental or activities.
What's the material where the green is?
That's, that's right now is a planter, that's the existing condition, and when we will be removing this, we'll have a decomposed granite, which is what we actually have on this area is just natural decomposed granite. So this is what we're looking at in terms of the patio. And, and we were looking at treating, this, this was treated as a garage entry, so you have a wide enough space to park two cars almost in front of it too. So we're looking at maybe expanding the planters and creating some kind of meandering feel and gives it a little bit more intimate and interesting feel to it rather than this driveway feel that they have. Now, we were also, when we met with Homeowners Association, Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association, and when we met with the Days of the Verdugos, they brought some concerns about, they raised concerns about the condition of the main pathway. It is in a, in a very deteriorated condition. So we looked at possibility of, of taking out the asphalt and redoing the driveway in a more, in a material that's more compatible to the site. But we have a main problem on that road that is, Public Works collects the, the water coming, shedding from the cul-de-sac road behind the Adobe, and then actually filters it into the Adobe site. So the water, and when it's raining, it's shedding on the roadway, which creates a problem no matter what we pave that roadway with. So we looked at creating a center of swale, similar to what you see in Pasadena in the one Colorado area, and, and, and that's what you see here on the map and, and doing the detail to avoid major damage in the future to that roadway, the pathway. Another concern was brought is the lighting situation at the site. The site is, there is no lighting except some incidental lighting in the patio area. So we looked at lighting the site, possibly just the main pathway and, and putting some lights in the plaza area and the patio area, looked at pole light with a fixture that is compatible to the era, and possibly one tree hanging lights here in the center to keep that area open. We're finalizing the cost on that. It seems that the restrooms we have funding for, but both the roadway, the pathway and the lighting, at this point, we're still looking for funding options. The city basically owned the site, bought it in 1989, and since then, we haven't done any significant improvements on the site, so.
Is that pathway, is it relatively flat? I, I've never been out there.
It's not flat.
It's actually, in some areas, it's about 7% slope. It's, it varies, so you can't put regular DG in there, it would be floating down. So we were looking and actually emulsified DG to put in, in this area. And then, again, the water will be coming down, but at this time, it's, it's really damaging that pathway.
Do you have any, like, ADA or handicap issues that you have to address as a result of this?
Actually, if we, right now, there is no legal ADA access to the Adobe or to the patio. We will have ADA restrooms, ADA accessible, but what we're looking is, if we are able to redo the main pathway, we will be able to have legal ADA access to both the patio and the Adobe. So we'll do a little bit of re-grading as well in that area.
Members of the commission, if I may also add, once the, the decomposed granite that has been spec'd for this project would actually be, a vehicle would be able to drive on this, because this road is also used for maintenance purposes and for not only maintenance of the building, but potentially delivering supplies and rental-related items. But potentially, an ADA-compatible van would be able to drive up, should we not be able to accomplish the needed grading to meet the, the ramp limitations.
I appreciate that clarification, because it does look like it's a fairly long...
It is long and, at some points, pretty steep.
Are you finished with your report?
I'm done with my presentation.
Okay, before we go on to more questions, I do have one card, Myrna Stanley, and then we'll see if there are any other questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Commissioners and Staff. My name is Myrna Stanley, and I am President of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. We are thrilled and very excited about these modifications and improvements to the Adobe, which, actually, it's been neglected for a number of years now, and it's finally getting some attention. This is the first time I saw the, the proposed plan for the pathway. If you've not been there, you really should go, because I wouldn't want to go on public record to tell you what the condition is. We have many seniors that come, God love them, with their, those walkers, to our annual meeting, which is held there at the end of October. I'm thinking of a family we have, push their child in a, in a wheelchair, she's severely disabled, but they bring her every year. And it's not only the, the pathway that's difficult to maneuver, it's also the, the tables and chairs which are from the year one. I mean, the, the old-fashioned, you know, that you have to throw one foot over the thing, the bench and then get in, in there, it's very difficult. So, I don't know if the problem is that the Parks or whoever the city has, has diverted the drainage from Verdugo Court, which is behind the Adobe, into the pathway, if, if... My concern is that swale in the center. That's what my concern is. And I, I'm, I'm sure people will be able to walk on both sides, but it's the wheelchairs and the, and the walkers and kids just run all over the place. And I'm, the other item was, I was concerned that the restrooms would be open all the time, every day, and Ms. Batar's statement said that only when there's events going on, and I hope that's, that's verified, because the Adobe itself and the restrooms are hundreds of feet back, and those restrooms will not be visible, and that is, that, that's a huge concern for us, for, for kids. So with that, I just want to let you know that we have our annual meeting, we hold it at the Adobe, the treasure of the Verdugo Woodlands, we call it, about the third or fourth week of October, and it doesn't look like that we're going to be able to do that unless we can kind of nudge this project along and pretend we're private industry and get it going. Because I don't know if this has to go to the City Council first, but I know it has to go to bid. I don't know if you have to 60 or 90 day for bids, but it's just, if we could just give it a little nudge, and I believe in miracles, it could be ready by October, but we're preparing for the worst, but we really, really encourage you to support this Adobe and see that, that all the work that's needed to be done there is done. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Lila, do, do we have a timeline?
Yes, at this time, we're looking at going to bid in May and starting construction in August and finishing end of October. So I'm sorry, it's bad news for the Homeowner Association, but that's, you have to, it takes time to do these things, and we have to go to council, definitely. The cost is required for us to go to council.
I also need to add, if I could, members of the commission, that, you know, as we typically start on any, any renovation project, the unknowns are many.
Yes.
And this project was not an exception. So when we had this noble idea of introducing restrooms at this facility, we had no anticipation that we would have to sprinkle, add sprinkler, fire sprinklers. Based on the fire department's requirement, that was a major hit to our budget.
To the restrooms or to the whole facility?
To the restroom facility.
Restrooms.
With that said, we have currently enough funding to proceed with the restroom facility and the removal of that trellis structure and expanding the, the decomposed granite patio area. However, as Ms. Batar stated earlier, we don't have sufficient funding to proceed with the, the roadway improvement nor the lighting, which we think both of them are very, as Ms. Stanley stated, are... which we think both of them are very, um, as Ms. Stanley stated, are quite needed for the site, given that dusk, you know, during the fall hours are around four, five o'clock, and this facility is open around, around that time. So with that said, when Mr. Duran referred to the strategic plan, this is one of those projects that has been plugged into that, hoping that we get direction, um, to plug numbers in to proceed with the second component of this project. At this moment, what Ms. Batar is referring to is only the first phase, the restrooms and the picnic area. Uh, that will be going out, going out to bid and starting construction before the next fall. And we're hoping that we'll find enough money between now and then to expand the scope and complete all the improvements at the same time.
So the second, second phase may not even be done this year if you don't have the funding for it, which is the driveway and the.
Yeah, that could be the, the worst-case scenario.
Driveway is not included in the renovation at this point, yeah.
Now, how much was the second phase?
Dollar-wise, I believe if I recall correctly, about hundred and fifty, sixty, roughly?
Actually, the, the, the lighting itself is coming at a hundred thousand right now.
Oh, the lighting, yeah. And we're in the process of working together with GWP on that to see if there are any potential opportunities to coordinate with them. And as you know, all city departments are cash-strapped, so we're not going to be getting any handouts on that.
Did I hear correctly, just the lighting is hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Roughly, yeah.
At this time, we get estimate, and it's coming to about that much.
Now, when the, when the adobe itself is not open, is the, are the grounds open to the public?
Yes, it's a park. It's a neighborhood park, and it's the hours are, Gary maybe will confirm. I think closes at dusk.
It closes at dusk every day. It's open at seven AM, usually six-thirty sometimes with the walk-through gate. We don't usually open the gate for drive-through, but it's open every day.
And so addressing Ms. Stanley's concern about the restrooms being open, the restrooms would only be open when there are tours or it's open for rental?
For rental only or tours, correct.
Okay, so there would be supervision there? Because I've been to the facility, I used to, at one time I was president of the DOV Heritage Association. So I've been to the facility, and it would be, yeah, we would need to make sure that that is secure.
And it helps also our staff with maintenance. It helps with the upkeep of the restrooms themselves, less vandalism. It seems to be a win-win for everyone.
Okay. Uh, one more question about the phase one and phase two. Uh, are we going to propose both phases to the city council at once or, or just the phase one? Because I live, I live in Verdugo Woodlands. If this maybe put me in a conflict, I'm a member of Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association, and I appreciate everything they do. I, uh, good thing we're not making any decisions on it tonight. But I think we need, if, if it's not part of our plan, maybe we can propose both, uh, both phases at the same time to the council and see maybe they can find a, 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 a funding for the second phase as well. So when work is being done, uh, you know, I've been in construction for a long time, and if you do things in phases, when you do the phase two, it just maybe damages or, or hurts the, the work that was done in the, in the first phase. And if you do it all at once, it may be, may cost, I mean, it will cost less as well. I mean, hundred thousand dollars for lighting, it's, I don't know what kind of lighting they're going to use over there, but it's, it, it seems very steep. So that's the question, if, if both phases can be presented to the council at once.
Uh, members of the commission, the concept was approved both by the Historic Preservation Commission as well as the city council before we started preparing our construction documents. Once they are ready, we, we do have to go back to the city council to get authorization to release for bid. At that point, we'd like to present the option. However, it is up to the department to find the appropriate funding for the project, and we are, uh, we are looking to see what opportunities we may have to. And you bring up an excellent point. The main reason why we started looking at the pathway is because of the fire sprinkler requirement to connect to the main, the water main, which requires disruption of the pathway as it is. So it would be.
Yeah, we'll dig it up.
Pressed to dig it up and then just replace it with more.
Asphalt surface.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, can I just ask for a clarification? Because I have been up there. We keep the, the big gate closed during the day. No, you, we open it.
Oh, the big gate, not the pedestrian, I'm sorry.
The pedestrian gate is kind of at the left.
Yes.
But that's not ADA accessible.
No.
So even if we put in this, this new roadway, it's not going to be ADA accessible unless we're having some kind of a meeting or a function up there where the big gate is open.
No, we'd have to, we'd have to then open up the big gate and lock it open.
And I hesitate.
Okay, so then the park would be open through the big gate?
Would have to be that way, yeah. Or we could open one side of the big gate so a vehicle couldn't enter, maybe.
Okay.
And an ADA person could.
Yeah, and I hesitate to say that we will be fully ADA-compatible, given that we don't, the roadway has not been engineered.
Right.
Not sure if we are able to, my, I hardly doubt that we'll be able to make it an ADA-compatible slope, but.
But it'll be better than what's there now.
Much better, this will be even. But also, the gate would be open and ADA-compatible vehicles, vans could drive up and, you know, unload passengers and reload passengers.
Thank you.
To confirm just what Mr. Tetafoyan indicated earlier is that a van can drive up.
Now.
Somebody, now the whole site is not ADA-compatible.
Okay.
But if we did the regrading, the van will drive up a person in wheelchair and drop him in that area around the patio.
And that part would be.
And that whole area will be ADA-compatible in slopes. So the wheelchair can go around, go to the patio, go to the adobe, and maybe wait there for a van to pick him up.
I think that's a really good goal.
And something.
Looks very nice.
Thank you.
And the ADA component, I think, is important to, um, highlight that with the city council so that, you know, maybe it might get them to agree to move forward a little bit more. Any other questions? Thank you for a great report.
Thank you.
What is next, please?
Item 5B4, art feature for Riverwalk.
I'm assuming that's you, Emil?
Yes, sir. Members of the commission, unlike Ms. Batar, I don't have any pretty pictures to share with you today. However, stay tuned, we'll come back next week. I'm happy to report to you that, um, the advisory, the public art advisory committee has met with the design team. Um, you may recall that the actual construction work is not by, is not being conducted by a city contractor. We have a memorandum of understanding with Northeast Trees, who is a recipient of the grant, doing the construction work at Riverwalk. And part of that memorandum require them to have a public art component. Um, they have selected the artist. Uh, the art advisory committee has met with the artist's team, I want to say at least twice, if not three times. Mr. Rafoke was on that advisory committee. And the artist's team is wrapping up the, the final direction from the committee. And I'm hoping that by our commission meeting in March, we'll have the pretty pictures to. They are actually very anxious to appear before you and do the presentation themselves. So stay tuned, please.
Great, any questions? All right, and what is next, please?
Item 5B5, monthly activity reports at A Workforce Development.
Okay.
Uh, good afternoon. Hello and commissioners. Uh, my written report is in your packet, but today I wanted to go over some of the economic data that's occurring in Glendale and Burbank. Uh, every year, the workforce development department takes a close look at what's happening with the local economy so we can make some decisions about where to allocate our funding and where to place our emphasis in trying to assist laid-off workers that need assistance getting back into the workforce. So I just wanted to give you a brief report. Uh, our focus in this report is actually what happened during the recession and the recovery to industries in our region, specifically in Glendale. Uh, just as some background, the recession started in December 2007. It was an eighteen-month recession, longest since World War II. And we've been in a recovery phase for about two and a half years. Next slide. When we started, prior to the recession, our unemployment rate was about 4.8%. And when the recession ended, uh, June 2009, it was 10.1%. Unfortunately, in a two-and-a-half-year recovery, uh, we haven't seen any change through December of 2011 in that unemployment rate. Uh, unfortunately, our economy hasn't been generating the jobs necessary to bring down that unemployment rate. Uh, just to focus on a few of our major industries, Glendale, even though it isn't one of the top industries in our region, uh, it's one of the fastest-growing, and that's due to the Disney Creative Campus project that's adding thousands of jobs. This is a really important project, as I, I think I've mentioned in the past, because it brings together all the elements of the digital entertainment medium, internet, television, gaming, animation, uh, motion pictures, all that are related to the new technologies in digital. And so one of the effects that we're probably going to see from this is that, uh, smaller companies, entrepreneurial companies are going to be attracted into the Glendale region, which bodes really well for the future of our economy and our workforce. Uh, I don't have any doubt that it's going to be the biggest job creator, uh, probably over at least the next decade. Uh, the healthcare sector is our number-one employer in the city. Uh, we have three major hospitals just in the city of Glendale. And this is really a unique circumstance because, just to put it in perspective, if you look at the entire San Fernando Valley, that includes Burbank and Glendale, I believe there are only sixteen major hospitals. So for Glendale to have three in such a small geographic area is a pretty amazing feat. And also, the fact that they're still, um, healthy from a financial perspective is a really good situation for the Glendale area. Employment-wise, uh, the employment stayed pretty steady through the recession and recovery. There was an increase actually in the nursing home area, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. The near-term outlook is pretty good for the healthcare area. Um, there've been numerous studies that show that unemployment, the unemployment rate and direction of the rate is tied to the health of the healthcare sector. And so as the unemployment rate declines, we could see a boost in that industry and a boost in employment as more of our residents get healthcare insurance and utilize that insurance. The other big factor for the healthcare industry is that we have a big baby boomer effect occurring in our region. Next slide. About a quarter of our population is considered baby boomer. About a fifth are in that range of retirement. And so based on some of these statistics, uh, there should be pretty strong demand for services in our region over the long term. That's one of the reasons I think we've seen major expansions at Providence St. Joseph and Burbank, at Glendale Aventis, Glendale Memorial. They know some of these demographics that are occurring, so they're preparing for the future in terms of services and the workforce. Retail is our second-largest industry in the region. If you look at some of the data from 2005, 2008, and 2010, the employment numbers are almost identical during that period. So you might assume that almost nothing happened during the pre-recession, recession, and recovery period. But actually, the truth is that we lost a lot of jobs from major retailers like Mervyn's, Borders, you can go down the list. There are probably thirty or forty different companies that terminated business in the Glendale area. But, uh, the Americana project actually started, um, around the start of the recession, and they were able to compensate for all those lost jobs. So, uh, employment in that sector remained almost the same during that whole period.
I think we should point out, though, that some of the companies like Mervyn's and, um, I'm not sure about Borders, but they've got, or, uh, and.
Circuit City.
Circuit City is the other one. It's not that they left Glendale, they're no longer in business.
Right.
So it's not anything necessarily that we've done as a community to cause them to leave and go somewhere else.
Right.
They're, they've gone out of business.
Right, mhm. Um, the impact of Americana, if you look at some of the more detailed data, you could see the impact, like in department store employment, it was up 44%. Uh, our auto sector was down slightly, but in recent months, that's really started to pick up. So, uh, that looks pretty positive for the future. Uh, as you might expect, anything related to housing, um, which led the entire country into the recession, has not done well in Glendale. Uh, if you look at some of the numbers, construction, real estate, finance, those levels of employment have dropped pretty significantly. And, uh, in terms of a turnaround, it doesn't look very likely that things are going to turn around in the near future. Manufacturing is still an important part of the Glendale economy. Most people assume that most of those jobs have gone overseas, but the, the truth is that it's still the number-three employer in the Glendale area. And, um, actually, it helped lead the country out of the recession due to the low value of the dollar. Our products domestically that were sold overseas were much more competitive. And so, um, locally, we also experienced that effect. Uh, the metals-related manufacturing in Glendale did also extremely well. And, uh, surprising area, professional, scientific, and technical, showed strong employment increases, the fourth-largest industry in Glendale. Some of the types of industries in that area, law firms, accounting firms, architectural firms, labs, uh, anything related to the scientific area, professional area, is included in this category. And one final thing I wanted to talk about, one of the areas that the workforce development section is really focusing on is a widening skills gap. This is occurring, um, not only just in Glendale, but through the entire country. And it's becoming a much more critical problem. And we're seeing some pretty good evidence that it's widespread in Glendale as well. If you look at some of the statistics, we lost eight million jobs during the recession, but yet we've only gained back 2.5 million in the recovery. And some economists are saying it could take at least five years to get back to the point in terms of employment where we were prior to the recession. But yet, currently nationally, we have three million job openings. We have fourteen million unemployed people and another nine million people that would like to be permanent, full-time, but can't find work, uh, so they're considered involuntary, part-time, or temporary workers. Uh, forty percent, uh, in one survey of companies, say that they've been unable to fill job openings for six months or longer because they can't find the workers. Uh, executives in another study are saying that, uh, the, um, the risk of finding or the inability to find skilled workers is one of the top risks facing their companies in 2012. Uh, Michael Dell, the CEO of Dell Computers, had an interesting take on this. He said that if you had a hundred job openings for network engineers, he'd have to find each of them painstakingly, one by one. If you had a hundred job openings for warehouse workers, you'd have 10,000 people wrapped around his building with applications in a day. So that gives you some sense of the, um, skills gap that's occurring in this country. Part of the problem, uh, is that we have ninety million Americans that, uh, for example, we offer a lot of vocational training and secondary or post-secondary education, but there are ninety million Americans that would not have the ability to complete that type of training or education. And we're adding 1.2 million high school dropouts per year. So this is another factor contributing to the skills gap. By 2020, uh, we're expected to have a shortage of about 1.5 million college graduates. By 2020, we're expected to have a shortage of about 1.5 million college graduates. But the other factor contributing to this mismatch in skills is that a lot of the people attending college, twice as many in fact, are choosing social science majors or business majors as opposed to the STEM area, the science, technology, engineering, and math majors. And that's actually where most of the demand in this country is in terms of available job openings. And the other situation is because there are so many unemployed people that employers are being pretty picky about who they're hiring and being extremely selective. So, in a lot of cases, they aren't hiring some of the people that they need and are just getting by at this point. This is an issue that Workforce Development is trying to be a catalyst to resolve locally. We've connected with Glendale Unified, and they're a pretty strong partner with us. We're going to be meeting with Burbank Unified. Glendale College is definitely supporting this initiative, and we also hope to connect with the four-year institutions in the region to try and address this issue. One of the things that really brought this home locally to me, I've been working with a local animation company that has 80 current job openings, and they say they can't find the skilled labor that they need. And if they don't find the labor in the future, they're going to look at other options like creating training programs or other resources in other states, hiring foreign workers, contracting out to foreign companies. Some of our healthcare companies have also been going overseas looking for workers that they can't find locally. Manufacturing is dealing with a lot of labor shortages, they can't find the skilled labor that they need. Some of that work may be contracted out to other countries as well, or other states. And so, it's a critical issue locally. It's a real shame if jobs are being created and opportunities are being created, but those jobs are going elsewhere and not being filled by local residents that need those jobs. So hopefully, we can create that talent pipeline in the future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Don, you mentioned, and I appreciate this presentation today, it's very informative. And we kind of went back and forth on the local need, right, in terms of what it is. And then you talked more about the country and how many job losses there were, 8 million, and then only 2.5 million have come back. Have you had a chance, or do you have the data to kind of crunch it down to what that means for our city, how many job losses there were for Glendale?
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to, you know, there's 8 million nationwide. How that translates locally for us?
Let's see. I think we have a labor force of about 90 to 100,000 in Glendale, and we have approximately about a 10 percent unemployment rate. So it's about 10,000 people that are still unemployed, looking for work. Another indicator is that if you take a look at the people coming into the Verdugo Job Center for Service that are unemployed, prior to the recession, we had, on average, about 2,500 visits per month. During the height of the recession, that number climbed to between 9,000 to 10,000 a month.
Wow.
And now, we're probably down to about 5,000 per month. So things are, look like they're slowly improving, but we still have a long way to go.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. What is next, please?
5B, 5B, Park Services Monthly Activity Report.
Take it away, Gary.
Thank you, President Rafferty, Commissioners. Usually, this time of the year is a slower horticultural time, and we're able to do projects, but not so much this year. After the windstorm on December 1st, we were inundated with all kinds of debris stuck in every nook and cranny of every park. We're continuing to clean that up, as you can see on the report that I've given you. But we've had others, minor windstorms that don't get national attention up in the Chrysanthemum Valley area, Montrose area. And it could be a one-day event or a half-a-day event, and we're finding more and more every week that goes by. More trees are being damaged or have been damaged, or leaning over playgrounds have snapped branches. They're called widowmakers, they're hanging up in the branches of a, and you don't see them right away until that branch starts to dry off, and then you see a dead branch laying perpendicular to the other branches. So we've been processing these trees, looking at them, trying to figure out exactly what to do with them. And the major reason, major ideas that we've come up with basically is to remove them. We can't, can't leave them out there in the parks. It bodes well for Arbor Day, because we are able to replace damaged trees and missing trees with Arbor Day trees. So we have some areas that we can, we can use for that. But right now, we're still, we're still removing debris, we're still picking up branches, we're still picking up, every time the wind blows again, a branch that has broken loose comes down, and we're still trying to keep, keep up on that. So basically, what we've been doing the last couple of months, instead of doing a project that we would normally do this time of the year, because it's not, and Mother Nature also has given us a blow because she's not raining, she should be. She was raining, that would also help us do other projects, maybe indoor projects, and we wouldn't use so much water on landscaping and lighting and whatnot. But this year, she refused to rain, pretty much, for the most part, so far. So hopefully, we'll get some rains in the near future and be able to use them. But right now, with the, and everybody likes the 75 to 80 degree weather, I mean, it's really nice, and that's why everybody comes out here. But for guys in my business, it's a little tougher, tougher to hack sometimes. But anyway, we're doing the best we can on cleanup, and hopefully, we'll get some rain soon.
Gary, what affected the fires, the station fire have on the trees once the winds came through? Did that weaken a lot of the trees so that the winds were even more disastrous?
Not particularly. Up in Duke Majin where the station fire was, they burned down to the edge of the park. The station fire basically took out the trees that were closest to it. So they were already burned or damaged to beyond repair. The other trees that were further down in the park, even though the heat was intense, it was, it was a back burn that the fire department used at station fire, and they pushed it back. So it didn't create any, any long-lasting effects on those trees and didn't make them any more susceptible to damage. It's just the, the hot, or the cold, dry, high winds, the gusts, that really killed us.
Okay. Great.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah. You got the report, if you have any questions, anything.
No, um-
Nope, not yet. Not yet.
All right. Any, any other questions? Okay. What is next?
Item 5B, 5C, Recreation and Community Services.
President Rafferty, Commissioners, City Staff, Ross Ferris, Community Services Manager of the Community Services and Parks Department. The recreation section, at this time of year, this is also our slow period. Your report pretty much outlines what's happening at the Civic Auditorium. We're running revenue-wise even, within $6,000 of last year. And this is actually good, because as we've been through the downturn here, we've had some of our older events go away, and we've been able to replace them with new events, like computer shows, sports memorabilia shows, that type of thing, so that at least our revenue is running even. As you heard before, we're working on new ways to increase revenue at the Civic Auditorium, and of course, the complex is available for anything that the city needs to do. In addition, at this time, the recreation section is working on getting ready for summer. We're getting our day camp schedules put together, we've turned our recs in, we're going to start hiring summer staff shortly. And we're also working on the relocation of the Brand Studios staff and those activities, which, beginning actually April 1st, actually March 1st, the Brand Studios and libraries are closed to the public. And we will be moving, at the end of March, to three locations: the Chevy Chase Library, Griffith Manor Community Building, and the Dunsmore Community Building. And those lifelong learning classes and other activities will take place, those facilities, while the renovation is in progress. Renovation will take about 18 months. And when we're done, the library will have a nice renovated facility, and the Brand Studios downstairs, which is our area, will have new air conditioning and heating, a little better lighting, and we'll clean it up a little bit. So that's what we're doing right now. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is next?
Item 5B, 5D, Park Planning and Development.
Members of the Commission, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation today, however. I promise to have one in the near future, because we just released requests for qualifications for two upcoming design projects: the artificial turf, soccer turf at Edison Elementary, and also Maple Park site improvements, which is the second phase of the work that we started there with the community building completed last year. March 7th is when those RFQs will be coming in. We've targeted high-end design teams as well, because these are very exciting projects. We want to get high-caliber designers working with us on these park projects. As I reported to you last time, we had two, we currently have two projects that are in the process of being wrapped up with construction documents: the Maryland Mini Park, as well as Car Park. Those should be wrapped up within the next two couple of months and go out to bid, prior to that, get council approval, go out to bid, and retain a contractor to start work on those. So I'm happy to say that we'll be in construction, hopefully, four or five months from now, should everything go as planned. And we should have a designer onboard in the next couple of months to have some fun presentations before you on the new projects that we're starting. Thank you.
You know, you mentioned the Maryland Mini Park would be under construction about four to five months.
That's the goal.
And then how long would it take to be completed?
I believe it's about a nine-month construction project. We'll confirm that once we have the contractor onboard.
Thanks.
I noticed there's nothing in the report about Rock Glen, and I know that I've been asked by a couple of people, what's going on with that?
What's Rock Glen?
Or, not, Rock Haven. Rock Glen's the street I used to live on.
Oh, really?
In South Glendale.
Members of the Commission, Rock Glen might be easier to answer than Rock Haven. Rock Haven's actually, we continue to maintain that facility to the extent possible. We spent a great deal of effort covering the roofs of the main structures a few months ago, because we had some severe leaks. The replacement, the roof replacement is rather costly, so one of the options that we explored and that we ultimately implemented was actually tarping them in a very attractive, see-through plastic that is weatherproof and doesn't need to be maintained on an annual basis, till the future of that facility is decided upon by the council, unless just has an addition.
President Rafferty, if I can expand on that. In addition, we do have a caretaker onsite to take care of the campus, and it's a huge campus, as you know. We also have a gardener onsite that's there. We currently have no plans, given the budget situation, there is no budget to do anything in the way of a master planning or ideas for a development project, and we don't see anything in the foreseeable future. So we're basically just there and holding it in tow. We do have a good working relationship with the Chrysanthemum Valley Historical Society, and they have a project where, once a month, a number of volunteers go to Rock Haven and do some light cleanup and reorganizing of the furniture that's in some of the buildings. And that's all that we're doing at this time related to Rock Haven.
Just maintaining it and keeping it as safe and sound as we can without spending a lot of money.
Yep. And President Rafferty, before we adjourn, I owe you an apology. You did ask me to also give a quick update on Cruise Night. And when you asked for staff comments, I hadn't found my notes yet. So very quickly, the status of Cruise Night is, as you may or may not know, Cruise Night had been funded with redevelopment funds over the last several years. The, the budget is $90,000, so it's a hefty price tag. At the present moment, we have, usually this is the time of year where we would have executed our contract already with the marketing firm known as Mr. Rock and Roll. We have not done, done that yet because of the uncertainty of having the funds for Cruise Night this year. We are, Mr. Ferris is presently working on a, a couple of different scenarios or proposals so we can determine the feasibility of, of how to scale down the event so that we could have, continue to have some semblance of Cruise Night that would not be as costly, and then submit a report to the City Council to see if they would be willing to, to use general funds or another funding source to fund this year's Cruise Night. So that's the status.
We're very sad that there is, the funds are not available. No one really wants to see us not have a Cruise Night. We're going to try to have a scaled-down version, but we need to plan rather quickly. Cruise Night, of course, comes right in the middle of the summer, and that's right at the beginning of the fiscal year. So if we're going to have any type of event at all, we really can't wait until the budget is approved on June 30th to say, hey, you know, we'd like to have Cruise Night in July. Now, we can move it back at the possibly August or September. So it's a real challenge, but we definitely, we definitely want to have something. It's a, it's a, it's an event that benefits, it's a win-win. It benefits the community, it benefits the families, it benefits the merchants. So we're, we're working toward that.
That's great.
Sir Rafferty, I have a couple of quick questions for you. The budget is $90,000. Do we have any revenues? What is our, our-
We do. We have, normally, we have sponsors about $20,000 to $22,000.
So it costs us about $60,000 to $70,000?
Correct. That's right.
Okay. And one other question, this may sound funny, because I was asked to ask. There are many people that I know, they collect very old pedal cars-
Yes.
And that are very expensive as well, but can they participate as well? I mean, as a, as a show, if it's, I know there, there are a lot of nice hot rods and old antique cars, but can they bring their, have a little section to display their, if we have a Cruise Night? Because the, the big boys that own those cars, they used to cruise in small pedal cars and, and farm tractors and stuff like that, so.
They, they did. The, the answer is yes. We would certainly consider that if a group wanted to display their, their pedal cars. They, you know, I would, I would certainly try to work them in, yes. And we would, we would consider that a display. We've done that before with, with different groups.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Let's hope we can find the money. All right. And-
Rafferty, it's time for you to go on your fundraising mode and-
I have an idea or two, but I don't know that I can come up with $70,000 or $80,000. If there is nothing else, we'll adjourn to, back to our regular schedule on Monday, March 19th, is the next meeting. We are adjourned.